Called a meeting to order. Thank you for those who are here in attendance and those that are watching from home. I'm going to ask Albert to please lead us in the flag slip. Thank you.
Ready, begin. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kane, may I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Viasenot?
Here.
Mayor Protim Garola?
Here.
Mayor Brogie?
Here.
Councilmember Austin?
Here.
Councilmember Mendez?
Here.
Going on to item number four, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I have a motion to approve the agenda.
And a second?
A second.
The motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Item number five is public comment. This is an opportunity for anybody who has something they want to talk about that's not on the agenda this evening. So if you filled out a green slip, please provide it to our city clerk over here. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Bob Birigan. I'm the owner of the Sespe Industrial Park. And I came here today to, just to jump to the end, to sort of encourage you that I'd like to talk to you at some point about the planned mobile home, excuse me, the mini storage and outdoor storage ordinance that's had its first reading a couple weeks ago. I wasn't really familiar with it. I do have an application on file for a mini storage project. On the project, and I should say on the, it's the piece of property just on the other side of Pole Creek, next to Eldorado Estates. And I've owned it for about 25 years. And John Meadows here is one of my tenants. In fact, he's one of the incredible tenant. And has really helped make that facility what it is today. As you know, it's an existing manufacturing zone. And I'm not here to try to tell you what you should do, because you know, that's up to the council. But I do feel that there's some considerations on this particular piece that over the long haul, some of the things that are in that ordinance might not be in the best interests of the city over the long haul. So I'm not here to try to argue it today. I did file an appeal, but I realize it's a, it's an ordinance, so it's not appealable because it's not an action about our project in particular. Although the ordinance itself, probably I'm the only piece that it applies to that currently has an application on file. I wish I had known about it because I could have made a more timely argument. But I'm just here to say that I have a couple existing tenants. I'm in particular concerned about the potential impact on their existing operations. You know, it's, there's plenty of uses for the property, but I'd like to, I'd like them to have some comfort knowing whether they can continue to operate their existing businesses out there as well as what's possible in the future. So I apologize for not making a more timely appeal or a more timely, being more involved in the process upfront. I literally did not realize it was happening. And naively, I assumed that somebody that I knew from the city would probably have let me know. But that's my fault. That's not the fault of the city. Anyway, that's my pitch. I'd just like to have a chance to come back and talk to it at a future point. Great. Thank you.
Thank you. And no other speaker requests known from the public? Okay. We will move on then to item number six, City Council Report, Recommendations and Comments.
Mayor, I do have one thing to just put on the agenda for the community. Well, first is a reminder to folks to check the City of Fillmore website and the calendar of events. It's constantly being updated. Our Cultural Arts and Recreation Commission has a lot of events, I know, coming up. The city does as well. And one event that I want to put on the radar that's beginning to be promoted is on May 18th, the Rotary Club is back after, not sure if it's one year or two years not being, not having their 5K, 10K fun run. But they are back. And they are doing it in collaboration with the Fillmore High School cross-country team. So that's wonderful. That'll be on Saturday, May 18th. And also, right after that, and we hope to do some cross-promotion collaboration, the City of Fillmore and Fillmore Unified School District is once again hosting their Health and Wellness Resource Fair. So there's a 5K, 10K walk run in the morning, bright and early, and then right after that, there'll be a Health and Wellness Fair. So it's just, it's a good day for health and active, active living, healthy lifestyles in the city. Just wanted to promote that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other reports?
Yeah, I have something I'd like for the council to consider putting on a future agenda, is last, last meeting, we considered whether we should raise our stipend. I'd like to bring back the city clerk's, what she's given, and if we can examine that and give some consideration to that.
I would get behind that.
I support that.
I support that, too.
Okay. So I'm assuming that would be something that would go in front of the ad hoc first? Or is it gonna come, okay. Great. Thank you. And Albert?
Yes, I wanted to share something that I became aware of back at the end of January. It was with the Chiquita Canyon landfill. And I don't know if anybody's heard about that. But it's having a lot of air pollution control issues. And so I reached out to Ali Gassemi, who is our air pollution control officer for the county. And he assured me, he looked into the matter, and he reached out to CARB, which is-
California Air Resource Board.
Air Resource Board, yeah. There's Southern California Air Quality Board.
Management District.
Yeah, the, yeah, a bunch of the acronyms. But he reached out to all of them. And he came back and he said to just rest assured that there is not a potential for danger for our residents because of the prevailing winds that you typically blow from west to east. And the fact that we're also about 11 miles from the site. But they are testing. He did address it at today's Air Quality Control Board. But he's going to have two experts give us a report at our next meeting next month, which would be the second Tuesday of the month, in March. But he just wanted to rest assured that potential for danger, there is no significant risk factor to residents of Ventura County.
Okay. And where exactly is that canyon?
Chiquita Canyon landfill. It's just right outside.
Oh, the landfill. Okay, sorry. Yeah. Gotcha. Okay. Thank you for that. Anybody else?
Mayor, I'm sorry, I have one more thing to add for the quick. Thank you. And that is, I'm sure it was last week or two weeks ago, there was a second community meeting. And I think, Mayor, you may have attended a first one, with the Ventura College Community, Ventura College Board of Trustees. And this is regarding ongoing talks about increasing the size, the scope of the Ventura College East Campus, which right now exists in Santa Paula, towards their west side over by Peck Road. And some of the, some of the buildings there alongside highway, freeway 126. There has been a push for over 20 years for there to be what's called a educational center, which, and the idea is for there to be, potentially land near Halleck and 126 in Santa Paula, for a bigger educational center, having a lot of vocational classes, and also potentially partnering in allied health, medical professions with the Santa Paula Hospital that will move some point in the next, I don't know, maybe five, 10 years, to that location near Halleck and 126. Anyhow, it was a well-attended meeting. Myself, councilmember Mendez was attendance. I think all of Santa Paula City Council members were there. School board members, superintendent Shifely here from Fillmore. Great meeting. And I think the conversation is continuing to move forward positively for this. There's no, I don't think, action that took place at the meeting, but it was, it was very positive. So just wanted to report that out.
Yeah. On that note, with regard to the ongoing review and community outreach and input, is there a way that we can actually ensure that that information, these meetings is put out to the community? I know that Fillmore's kind of been left in the dark on it a few times for, I know the meeting I attended, I was the only one there from Fillmore. But somehow get that information so that it gets out to our community as well?
Yeah. I can ask the organizers, I think there's a group called Santa Clara Valley Together, and they sort of are providing updates. So I could ask that some, like a city, a city person be added to just the list serve to get those updates. Okay.
We have also the school district is working closely with them for potential use of the facility, the new facility or the high school. And so I think they're a little bit tied in. And I want to say I've seen messages go out via the school district.
I just know when, after I had attended the meeting and I spoke about it at council, there, most people weren't even aware this was even occurring, that this, the possibility or the likelihood of this extension from the colleges, college district being put here in Fillmore, not in Fillmore, I'm sorry, closer to Santa Paula. But it is also, it's being planned with the idea of catering to the entire Santa Clara Valley. And I just think we all need to be in the loop on that. And I think there are a lot of interested parents that would like to, you know, attend and have their two cents heard. So, okay. Moving on, let's move to the consent calendar. Do I have a motion to approve?
So much.
I have a motion, I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so a motion from, that was you, Albert. Okay. So a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I would just like to say that my, I'll lodge a no for 7B for the salaries.
Okay.
But the rest, aye.
Okay. So consent calendar is approved. Let's move on to new business, item 8A, introduction of an ordinance adding Fillmore Municipal Code Chapter 7.50, establishing rules and regulations for massage establishments, massage practitioners, and massage therapists. And this is the first reading of a massage ordinance.
Correct. Good evening, councilmembers. Mayor Brogie, I'm Deborah Cavalletto, Finance Director. Item 8A has staff requesting the approval of the first reading to introduce the ordinance of 24964, which adds to the municipal code 7.5. Senate Bill 731 created the California Massage Therapy Council, or C, I got CAMTI, I guess, which preempted cities' ability to regulate said establishments. The Assembly Bill 1147 returned authority back to the cities, with cities permitted to adopt and enforce loan, local zoning, business licensing, et cetera, for massage establishments and businesses that are certified, CAMTI certified practitioners. Illegal operations in massage establishments can increase the risk of injury to clients due to improper training or uneducated massage providers. Cities in Ventura County, in conjunction with the Ventura County Sheriff's Office, has discovered that some of these massage establishments were engaging in human trafficking and illicit massage services. The City of Fillmore does not currently license massage businesses, and staff is not aware of any such business operating within the city without a license. This, currently, the code, Fillmore Code does not currently contain a regulation on such businesses. Therefore, staff is recommending that the City Council adopt ordinance 24964 to protect and advance the health, safety, and welfare of the city's citizens, should any establishment seek to operate in Fillmore. Permit fees will be established for massage businesses through future City Council resolutions to offset staff time towards the permit process. This is my presentation, and Tiffany and I are available for questions.
Thank you very much. Okay.
Hi, I do, thank you, Mayor. I do have a couple of questions. So one of them is that I do believe that there are some massage therapists that are offering their services here in Fillmore. You know, I just, through the social media and contacts, you know, hear of them. So for those, and then also, just to point out that also in Fillmore, I know in the Latino community, in our Spanish-speaking community, there are massage therapists. They're called sobador or a sobadora. And they definitely operate in Fillmore. Again, I just know of this through ties to people and that sort of thing, social media. Question is, is understanding licensing them, not only the City of Fillmore, but saying that they need to get the California Therapy Council certification, and if they do not have it. If these folks want to operate, and they do have an ongoing business, let's say, can they pursue these things and still have their business? Basically, the question is, in good faith, if showing that they, you know, are working on that license, have enrolled in a school of therapy, that sort of thing. That's where I'm going with that.
The chief might know more about this, but I think it's a crime to not have the state license and be giving massages to people. So I would think if they don't have that, they're not supposed to be operating until they get the licenses. But I mean, obviously, they're flying under the radar. I mean, Kevin's like totally surprised to hear this.
I mean, I know, it's no brick and mortar, but-
Yeah, there are a lot of people who go to people's homes and things like that.
Yeah.
But they're all supposed to have that.
They're all supposed to have it. Okay, okay. That's, well, I was just wondering for someone who, who hears about this, right, talking about it, comes to the city, wants to, wants, honestly wants to have their business be legal, you know, and not operate in the shadows, is there some sort of provision we can give to them, you know, just so that they don't, shut them down? Again, if this is the way they're earning business. And then this is, this is an ordinance that we're bringing forward and understanding why, right, to protect, to protect the public. But I'm just trying to see if there's, I don't know, if there's any leeway there to say, okay, you know, you're, show that you are in the effort of becoming a licensed massage therapist.
I mean, I think we can't know that they're violating state law. So it would be more like, don't tell us you're doing it, but let's just quickly, like, fix it. Because we do want them to be complying with the law, our state law, as well as our codes. So I agree that we want to encourage that. But maybe if they could not be like super forthcoming on the details, and just say they're interested in pursuing this kind of thing.
Okay.
Just because we wouldn't want to get in trouble knowing if something, you know, if some kind of claim was made against them, that something happened.
Right.
And we knew that they were operating without a license, that wouldn't be a good look on the city.
Got it. So my, my follow-up question then, can something be produced and set up here for the public, a flyer, English, Spanish, what to do if you want to operate a business, a massage business in the city, just saying, these are the steps. You have to do X, Y, and Z. Like, that's just my request, just so that it's a public, again, no one's saying anything, but someone can come and say, oh, I, you know, I've got a brochure now, so I know to do. Not saying that they are, but let's say they want to be, they want to do a business like this. Okay.
I mean, probably a big city, like LA has something that makes sense.
Something that we can go, okay, yeah.
Yeah, we can look for that.
That's, that's what came to mind.
Yeah, I think I would support that. If, if we're enforcing an ordinance, we take it seriously, we ought to provide maybe simplified material for somebody to just, hey, how do I, how do I get properly licensed? As long as it doesn't take too much of staff time, hopefully. Again, like Tiffany said, we can borrow from-
Sometimes, yeah, you can find it in a major city.
Other comments?
I have one. I was kind of unclear. So is this going to also apply, what if somebody comes to the city and wants to open up a spa, like a day spa?
I would assume.
Which is going to have cosmetology, massage therapy, all that?
You have to be- The biggest reason for this is the sheriff's and the DA's office had a big meeting, and they, a lot of these types of businesses, including the day spas, have the human trafficking happening. And so a lot of it is to get on our radar, who's doing these types of activities, so we can make sure that that's not occurring there.
I know, because where we operate, we have a spa. And all the massage therapists had to have background checks. They had to apply to the state to get their state licenses, and they're all posted. There's a whole process that they have to go through before we even, we've got to have a business license. Health, health department comes out and checks everything. So I just wanted to make sure that we're going to be covering all these bases when we, in the soli-
Well, I mean, it says that specifically in the report, on the ordinance itself, too, though, that if they, under the scenarios you're talking about, they have to have their license to do that. So whether it be a spa, or any place where they might utilize, you know, the massage therapist or massage therapy. So, yeah. I want to just emphasize that I think it's really, really important that we take this seriously. And that, I mean, if I, I, I'm not asserting that people out there are doing this for nefarious reasons. But there are. I mean, maybe not necessarily right here in Fillmore people that we know, but it happens. And I know it's been happening. You know, I spent years and years working in law enforcement, and it happens a lot. And it's, the human trafficking side of it is just frightening to me. And I think that's why we take this seriously. And if there are people that are out there operating without a license and a permit, we need to communicate somehow. I mean, maybe that's another day, another discussion for another day, but we need to know how to communicate to them, stop what you're doing, get your permit, get your license, and then do it correctly. But don't continue doing it without a license. How do we have that conversation?
I mean, we can try and push it out on social media. And, I mean, Erica and Dave could probably come up with more ideas to try to roll it out. But also relying on word of mouth. And I mean, if you all know people who, you know, have massage therapists and different people that come into homes, you know, spread the word, make sure they all understand why it's, human trafficking. But then also, some of these at-home people have assaulted people.
Yep.
And so that needs to be protected as well.
Okay. Any other comments on that? Okay, so do I have a motion?
I make a motion to, make a motion to pass ordinance number 24964, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Fillmore, adding Fillmore Municipal Code Chapter 7.50, establishing rules and regulations pertaining to massage establishments, massage practitioners, and massage therapists.
A second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none. This item passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to item 8B, consideration of acceptance of public landscape improvements for track 5496 from Hearthstone. And I understand we have at least one passed to Epstein.
Yeah, I'll recuse myself.
Recuse yourself.
Due to proximity.
Okay.
I recuse myself, too, Mayor. Live in the area.
Turn it over to staff.
Good evening. We got recused? Okay. So the, I have a picture, the good evening, council, mayor, staff and public. Hope everybody's having a good evening. This is the item for the acceptance of public landscape improvements for track 5496, which is also known as the Bridges subdivision, the first phase of the bridges. We often call Phase 1B or Track 5496. The landscape improvements that we're talking about tonight are in the public common areas shown in yellow on this map. It's, you know, the traffic circles at Mountain View Street and Central Avenue, and all along the bike path, along the levee at the southern border of the city. To the very south of this picture is Santa Clara River and the river levee. And so that yellow all along the bottom of the picture is the levee landscaping on the street side at Heritage Valley Parkway. And way up in the right corner is Pole Creek Basin. And there's a landscape area along the side of that levee at Pole Creek. And then there's parkways around the school. All of those are part of the common area landscaping. They're all within the Landscape Maintenance District, which is the Heritage Valley Lighting and Landscape District 2007-1. That lighting and landscape district is fully funded and will pay for 100% of the maintenance and ownership of these improvement areas. We've been levying funds for several years in that lighting and landscape district because this is sort of a phased development. And as we've accepted phases, we've levered the houses. I looked at the lighting and landscape district this morning, just to kind of get a picture. It covers not just this first phase of the bridges, but all the way in track 5520 to Phase 2, to the city limit. The entire 2007-1 lighting and landscape district is for all of the improvements. We are at about a third of the maximum levy that can be charged to the homes in that district. Like, the max levy right now is $1,800 annual, and we're only at about $600. And that's, that's healthy, because we're probably past the 50% built and provided and turned over mark. We've accepted a lot of the different improvements. The rest of it is in the 5520 area. And so there's lots of room for as we build and complete and accept more landscaping, that the levies will go up. But we, you know, we calculate every year what it's costing to maintain, and we set those levies based on that. We're starting that process for this year right now. And so that'll be coming back to you. And so the district is really healthy. They're fully funded. We're not going to have any problems maintaining or replacing trees or taking care of these areas. And at the January 23rd meeting, the City Council approved an amendment to the contract with the city landscape contractor, Vinco Western, if you recall. And so we've already amended that contract to start caring for these areas. They're ready to take them over tomorrow. We have full funding in the landscape district. I think we're definitely ready to accept these areas from the developer into the city system. The developer's already submitted a warranty bond that will be good for one year. So if, as we take over, if we do find anything that's not up to par, the developer can either self-perform, or if they don't step up, we have a warranty bond. And that's already been submitted. So when you take action tonight, if you accept these improvements, then we will, you'll be also authorizing us to exonerate their remaining construction and labor and materials bonds for these areas. And I think that's everything I have to say. So that concludes my reports. I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Roxanne.
Sure.
Okay. Question, comments from council? Pretty, well, I do have one question. So once this is done, what's still remaining to be done?
Across the creek. So if you go over the bridge-
Over Pole Creek, okay.
Over Pole Creek into what I call Bridges Phase 2, or Track 5520, which has seven tracked phases. They still haven't built, the homes along Heritage Valley Parkway against the levee, for instance. And so they're building out in there, but we have not accepted those landscape areas in that, in that part of the district yet.
Okay. Great.
That's what's left.
Thank you.
Do we have a timeline as to when we're going to take, or when they're going to start, and when those are going to be completed?
They're under construction. Several, some of the landscaping has already been installed. That is not going to be as much landscaping as you see here. The interior residential streets, they didn't put the landscape areas against the private fences into LMD areas. They're for the private property owners to maintain in that side of the creek. And so- They're for the private property owners to maintain in that side of the creek. And so it, like when the Tressal Way roundabout gets planted, we'll take that on. In that, the big ticket items are gonna be the entry area at Tressal Way. On, that's gonna be like a park in Dry Riverbed that we're gonna take over and it'll be added to this district. And then the second, the community park that's at the bottom by the traffic circle at Tressal Way, there's a big double park. And it's not gonna be a lot of ornament, you know, it's gonna be nativescaping. And so it's a large area, but it won't be a lot of grass to water or anything like that. And so it'll be economical as we accept those areas. But the, they're, the landscape plans are approved. We probably will see those go in over the next year. And then they'll, they'll likely be accepted into the Landscape District, not this go-round, but 2025, 26.
Thank you.
I really liked the way the discussion started out, the beautiful Bridges subdivision. I think the landscaping that, you know, it's been focusing on is the reason for that too, a good portion of it.
Yes. And that's why it was so important that we make sure the handshake is good and we don't lose plants. And that, and we are gonna be, there are some trees that suffered due to some water situations, and we'll be replacing those in coming months.
Okay. Anything else? All right. Then do I have a motion on this one?
Okay. I'll move that City Council accept the completed public landscape improvements installed for track 5496 and authorize the exoneration of track 5496, the Levy Common Area Landscaping Performance Bond.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. We will, the motion passes and we will move on to item 8C. This pertains to our dog park.
I should wait for...
Yeah. Everybody get situated again. On to the dog park.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, city staff recommends the city council enter into a contract with FS Contractors to begin construction of the ADA requirements to the dog park. Once that is completed, the dog park can then be open to the public. Their estimated cost is $113,000 for construction. When we presented this item to the city council, we had estimated $186,000. The total cost with management and, and design of the project is $176,000 approximately. With that, I'll take any questions you may have.
Okay. Council members, any questions, comments?
Yeah, Kevin, I didn't, I don't know if I read this or not, because we're reading a lot. Time to completion?
Forty-five days. Once they enter into contract, they start work.
Oh, good. Okay. Just to fine tune it, from the time they enter the contract to the time they start working?
Yeah, from the, when, from the time they start work, it's 45 days.
You better get signed in.
Okay. We better approve it first. Okay. Question, other comments from staff?
Just to clarify some of the parking spaces, are those still gonna be on the opposite side of the road, or are they gonna be on the dog park side?
The dog park side.
Okay.
Okay. Hearing no other comments or questions for staff, I will entertain a motion.
I move that we, City Council approve the award of a contract to FS Contractors, Inc., for the construction of a project, specification number 23-05, Two Rivers Dog Park Improvements Project.
My second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none. This item passes. Thank you. Moving on to item 8D. And this is the, having to do with our budget schedule coming up. And I will turn this over to staff.
Good evening, council members. Mayor Brogie, I'm Deborah Cavallotto, Finance Director. Tonight, we're asking your approval for the Budget Development Guidelines and schedule for preparation of the FY 2024-25 Annual Budget for the City of Fillmore. The City Council provides staff with overall direction for development of the annual budget and approval of the annual schedule. This schedule concludes with the budget adoption. Past policies of City Council includes adopt and maintain a balanced budget, whereas through annual operation, operating revenues will meet or exceed operating expenses. Maintain a general fund balance to help offset economic uncertainty. And the continued self-supporting nature of enterprise funds, such as water and sewer, that they have adequate fees and services to cover all operating costs. Along the way, city staff, city council, and the Budget Adcock Committee will be engaged in the process. In addition to myself, the Finance Department budget team includes accounting manager, and, sorry, accounting supervisor, Ambrie Tibay, and accountant, Myra Rosas. This item meets the City Council's goal of financial management as good stewards of the public's tax dollar. Alternatives to our recommendation is approve a revised proposal and/or development and review schedule, or provide staff with another direction. End of my presentation. Available for questions.
I just wanted to confirm, last year, we hit all of our deadlines for the schedule, which would generally be reflected in this schedule, correct?
That is my goal. We are, let you know, I am, as it's our first year with the City of Fillmore, as well as my other staff, working on the budget. But we work as diligently as possible and ensure that if anything, if we're at slightest delay, everyone will be aware. But of course, we have to make sure that it is done before, by June, because you need to have an adopted budget, unless there is, of course, a catastrophic event, where in that case, we have other options to use. I do not see one, and don't hope one.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you. So...
Actually, I have one question, Mayor.
Sure.
If you don't mind. Thank you. Thank you, Deborah. And that's about the public input. We sort of have a May 28 date here, and the activity sort of, you know, that we have after consideration by the public input, City Council discusses. Is there, is that the, is that one meeting that we have for public input on the budget, or is there, is there a meeting beforehand? And I'm just trying to remember too, the...
This is just the meeting, we come in, we present it. If there's any options, the public comes in and says, don't like what Deborah did, or we like, or we like to add more information. That's where it comes to. And then it comes to the adopted.
Okay.
And fortunately, with May, that's a good opportunity. If something does occur and maybe it changes, or after the fact, we do have a little bit of time.
Okay. So then to follow up on that, just to, is the public's first view of the budget then when it's released and the agenda the few days before the meeting?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I'm understanding that, and I think that's how it's been done. I, I, I would like there to be a process between it being, this is my recommendation, I guess, to council, of having a little bit more of time for public to view the budget that we're considering. Meaning like one, one extra meeting. And I know this are tight timelines, but I think that would be, it's good transparency and allows the public to look at it.
What's it been in the past? Is this...
We've just brought, the, City Council brings the item to one meeting in May, and they adopt at that point in time. The stuff is on the budget one week prior to the meeting. The budget is presented one week prior to the meeting, overall on our city webpage. And so we've never had public comments since I've been here in 13 years. So it's up to council's direction.
I guess maybe there, to fine tune that recommendation, just maybe having it publicly available on the website as soon as that draft that would be brought to the council is ready. Whether it be a week or two weeks prior, I don't remember exactly where that would be in the schedule.
So that what you're talking about, look, you have a nice chart here, spelling out the dates and what's gonna happen on each date. So we've, I think what Chris is referring to is finance team meets the city council members in, no. No, but we will have a draft budget at that time, April 23rd. So you're suggesting that we...
It would probably be after, after those meetings.
Yeah, after those meetings.
Right.
So between April 30th and May 28th.
Yeah, once all council member.
Provided online. Is that doable?
Yeah. Once all those inputs from those meetings have been taken, then publicly available until that meeting.
Okay. And I'll defer to you, Deborah, on, I mean, does that work with your thinking on the timeline? If we, sometime between April 30th?
If we are making our those deadlines, we can. I'm just trying to make sure that we do have a little, again, wriggle room in between that and the presentation, because things do come up. But we ensure as quickly as possible it's done. We would like to, as your direction, put it on the website, we can.
What is the deadline in June?
Well, you can have the budget approved all the way up to June, I think, the first week or ever, trying to recall, before...
I mean, under state law, it has to be approved by the end of June. We're going to do a continuing resolution, but remember, we only had the one meeting in June, which is like the 12th or something.
I mean, because in theory, what could happen is if we make it available for the community to review between the 30th, April 30th, and the time that we get to our May 28th meeting. I can see where people will show up at the May 28th meeting, and there'll be, you know, requests for potential changes and, you know, it might be something we would want to accept. So we still would have time to make any additional changes after that.
At the meeting in June.
Yeah, that June. Yeah. Okay, that, that works. So I guess the only change to this is making it available on the website from anytime after April 30th. Correct? Any objections from our city manager? Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, do I have a motion then?
I move that City Council approve the Budget Development Guidelines as discussed for FY 24-25, and approve the attached budget development and review schedule relative to preparation and approval of the FY 24-25 Annual Budget.
My second.
You have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so now it takes us to 8E, and this is regarding mutual aid. And I will turn this over to staff.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll take this tonight.
Oh, okay.
Today, we're talking about the Cal-Warren Mutual Aid and Assistance Program. It's recommended that City Council, one, approve the city's participation in the California Water, Wastewater Agency Response Network Mutual Aid and Assistance Program, to authorize the city manager to execute any necessary agreements and documentation required for participation in Cal-Warren, and direct staff to work collaboratively with Cal-Warren and other member utilities to ensure a seamless integration into the program. An alternative would be direct staff not to participate in the Cal-Warren program. The city received in 22-23 the Ventura County Grand Jury Report on Water Availability for Wildfires in California on June 12, 2023. The grand jury looked at the 15 water purveyors within Ventura County and gave us a number of questions to take a look at. And through their investigation, the individual water purveyors and wastewater purveyors, they came back with recommendations and found certain things. One of the things that they wanted the jurisdictions to do was to, all the water payer, water purveyors, including the City of Fillmore, to enroll in the California Water Wastewater Agency Response Network. And that's again, to network of water and wastewater agencies that can provide emergency resources. Cal-Warren was established to enhance the capabilities of water and wastewater utilities to respond to and recover from emergencies and disasters. Provides a framework for jurisdictions to work together. It's based upon mutual aid, which we currently do with both our police and fire service within the county. So it's nothing new. This just opens it up to wastewater throughout the state of California. Benefits of joining Cal-Warren are resource sharing, enhanced preparedness, cost savings, and inter-agency collaboration. Joining Cal-Warren is a proactive step that aligns with the City of Fillmore's commitment to emergency preparedness and ensuring the continued delivery of vital water and wastewater services to our community. There is no fiscal impact to joining this. It does meet City Council goals of public safety, natural resources, and infrastructure. And attached are the articles of agreement and the grand jury report and our response to the grand jury. I'll take any questions you might have.
Okay. Anything from council? Any questions for city manager?
Just to clarify the interactions of, with Cal-Warren, who would be the authorized official? Is it yourself or delegated to someone else in the city staff?
I would be the head one. Do the emergency aspect of it, but I'd have Troy would be the one to make the phone calls and work directly with the individual utility districts.
Okay. And it took me a little while to kind of wrap my head around the whole situation and, and understand really what this is. I guess the best way that, to summarize maybe even what Dave said, is that we already have connections with other cities, but those come up as, like, we need them. This establishes more formal relationships with other cities to formalize the requests, but it doesn't fully commit us to respond to those requests. We do have right of refusal of our own resources, depending on the situation.
That is correct.
Mayor, if I could make a comment on that too. And I know a little further into the staff report and some of the documents, probably read as council members, that the report came back and there was recommendations from, oh, I don't want to lose the, the name of it. The, yeah, the Ventura County Grand Jury Report on Water Availability. And I think Troy and probably other staff did a really good job of seeing those recommendations, but also of responding to them in a way that's appropriate of what our city can and, you know, is feasible for Fillmore. And that's, that, you know, if a jurisdiction that is quite a ways away, you know, we're, we're, you know, we're Fillmore, we have our own water. We're here for mutual aid as needed. But to say that we're gonna sign up to truck water now, that was just, just not something feasible on a regular basis. So I just wanted to make a point that staff did a good job, I think, of really explaining where we stand as a city and, you know, you know, responding to those recommendations to what we really can do. And Cal, and joining Cal-Warren as mutual aid is something that we can do. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, then I will entertain a motion.
Okay, I'll move that the council approve the city's participation in Cal-Warren Mutual Aid and Assistance Program, that we authorize the city manager to execute any necessary agreements and documentation required for participation, and direct staff to work collaboratively with Cal-Warren and other member utilities to ensure seamless integration.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. This motion passes. Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to item 8D. And that is our, am I right?
Yep.
No. F, sorry. This is having to do with our fireworks, Fourth of July, Third of July fireworks. We'll turn it over to our fire chief.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, staff, and residents of Fillmore. Staff has prepared a tentative contract for you to review and hopefully approve for the annual aerial display on the 3rd of July for the Community Fireworks Show. It's the 3rd of July. I know that several years ago, we used to have the Fourth of July show. A little history is during COVID, we lost one of our original vendors who was providing that Fourth of July shows for us, coming out of COVID. Again, with the reduction or termination of a lot of community events, with the supply chain being compromised. Most of these aerial fireworks come from China. There was a lot of issues coming out of COVID in trying to reestablish a Fourth of July date. We were able to successfully at least establish a Third of July date three years ago. And it's been tough trying to... And it's been tough trying to work with the vendors who are out there. There's only a limited number of vendors who provide the product and, more importantly, the licensed pyrotechnic operators. They're in short demand. Coming out of COVID again, if there was any operators that were available to conduct fireworks shoots on the Fourth of July, they were going to where the money was at. But again, we successfully met with Pyrotechnics last few years, and they've been doing a great show. But unfortunately, they could only do it for us on the Third of July. Staff has been working with them constantly in the last couple of years, trying to get us at the top of their list for going to the Fourth of July, and we thought we were making good progress. They did do some management change at the upper end of their organization, and we're now working with a new or reestablishing our relationships with them. So hopefully, down the road, we can get back onto the Fourth of July schedule. So the contract, as you have in front of you there, is a total dollar amount of $27,000. A deposit of half of that is required on April 1st. So we're looking that the council approve a transfer out of reserves of the $27,000 into an account holding for the fireworks show on the Third. The, historically, we've been able to supplement the costs for the fireworks show. We've had some great donations. It's not anything that's, you know, we can count on year after year. But our two large fireworks, fireworks booth vendors have graciously donated to the aerial display in past years. And we do want to acknowledge Fillmore Western Railroad. They had donated every year also to the event. So the actual cost to the city had been minimized over the years. There is a fee that the fireworks, the nonprofit fireworks booth that we have on Highway 126, there is a part of their portion of the fee they pay that goes to the aerial display also. So anyways, staff is, again, recommending that you authorize the $27,000 in the holding account to pay for the Third of July aerial fireworks display.
Thank you, chief. Comments, questions?
Just want to make a comment that we appreciate all the staff efforts to continue to work with this company and, you know, just continue to work towards that regaining Fourth of July date at some point. So, thank you.
Thank you. Erica's worked continuously with them for the last past three years, and we do appreciate that also. Thank you.
Yeah, and likewise, you know, I do hear from the people in the community that are upset that it's on the third for the third year, third year in a row. And they don't quite understand that, so I appreciate you elaborating on it and explaining, you know, our hands are tied on this, and, you know, we would like it to be on the Fourth as well, but we'll get there, so.
We will get there, definitely.
Thank you.
I'd also like to encourage all of our pyrotechnics, who obviously live in Fillmore, to seek a license to get it on the Fourth.
Right, exactly. We get enough aerial shows.
That's true. Good point.
Chief, any idea where we are in the packing order? Are we down the bottom? Are we in the middle, or?
Well, again, we worked, working our, we felt pretty comfortable that we would, next couple of years, be there at the top.
Anybody we can knock off?
Erica said maybe.
Thank you, chief.
You bet.
Okay, do I have a motion on this agenda?
I'll move that we approve the appropriation of $27,000 for the 2024 July 3th Community Fireworks Show and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement.
I second.
You have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, this passes. Thank you. Okay, moving on to item 8G. This is the award of contract for design and construction of the shade structures at Two Rivers Park and Dolores State Park. I'll turn it over to staff.
Thank you. Good evening. So this is a fun one. Yay shade, right? We need this. We have, we advertised bids in December, and they were opened on January 11th. We received four proposals ranging in price from just over $200,000 to $475,203 from four reputable shade companies. We reviewed the low bidder and found that they were qualified and they had good references. And we spoke with them about the shade materials. We're satisfied that this company can do this job and will be using materials that are certified with the Department of State Architect, and they are of a quality that will last. So we are recommending that we award to SoCal Shade Sales. We've added some contingency and management funding into the budget so that the award amount is 220,400, well, the budget will be 2244110. The award amount will be their bid, 20401. But that gives us some contingency. Once you open up the ground, you just never know what's going to happen. The city budget has 360,519 allocated for various parks improvements, so this will take a big chunk of that, but it is something that we've been wanting to do for a long time. So what I've got up here is Two Rivers Park and Dolores State Park, and this isn't exactly what it's going to look like. We don't even know if they're going to be blue. There'll be material submittals made. We'll do color choice. They have to do the layout and site the poles. Once they set and fix the pole locations, then they do the final measurements and order the shade structures. That takes a couple of weeks for them to fabricate and to be in, so this probably will take a couple of months to execute. In real life, it's going to look something like that. And again, we'll have color material selections as we get going through this project. But they're most likely going to be rectangular quad poles. Although, the flexibility of the shade sale systems that SoCal Shade provides is that you can do single posts, you can do multi-posts, you can do triangles, you can do rectangles. And so that allows us the maximum flexibility. We have kind of spread out play structures at these two parks, at Dolores State and Two Rivers. And so there's a lot of flexibility that'll help us maximize the shade area cost-effectively with the system that Shade Sales, that SoCal provides. So that, I believe, concludes my staff report, and I'll take any questions.
Quick question. So the flexibility you're referring to, that doesn't change the cost? In other words, if we wanted to change the colors, or we wanted to have more posts, that?
So the costs are based on a specific layout, kind of, this is their proposal that we're looking at right now. If they get out there and there's conflicts, or we say no, we want it twice that size, then that could impact the cost, which is why we built contingency into it, because they're not really designed yet. The layout has to be set, and they have to verify that they can drop posts where they think they're going to drop posts. These are pretty significant posts. They require footings. A majority of the cost is always labor, because it is labor intensive to dig and set post footings and put up those posts. And so phase one is to design the post layouts to potful, make sure there's no conflicts, make sure the layout works. And then, once they get the posts actually installed and fixed, then they measure one more time, measure twice, cut once. And then you get the shade structures, and they just have to put them on the poles, so.
Okay. Any other questions, comments from staff?
I was just curious a little bit about the potential for maybe this, like, a smaller piece of material similar to, like, Two Rivers. I know that that's a, maybe a more robust design, but it seems to have held up very well, especially considering it turns into, like, a wind tunnel near the river at certain times of the year. Are there any concerns from staff about the wind just expediting decay of the material?
Right. That was why the material was such an important thing that we looked at. We specified a product that is DSA certified, and they're commercial grade, and they will last a long time, and we won't have to be replacing them every five minutes because they are expensive. Of course, that's why, as mentioned, the, a big part of the, half the cost of this is putting the posts in. The shade sales are not the main part of the cost, so they can be replaced, and they will need to be replaced. But we're talking 10, 15 years down the line typically for a product like this, because they're very heavy duty. Color is a thing. When we look at colors, if you choose the colors, like, in the reds or the bright colors that volatiles easier, then you do get, like, fading. And that's just a material choice as far as, you know, I recommend the colors that last longer and not, like, bright reds that fade really quickly, and then it looks bad. So that color will be a decision. But these are heavy duty, UV resistant, made to last, and can withstand. And part of the layout and the design will be looking at the wind loading and how big of a sail can they go. That will size the size of the footings and the posts.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
I was happy to see the bumpers on the, on the poles for the children.
It's always nice to see something in, you know, in place. Yes, exactly. And this is right off of the SoCal Shade Structures website. This is the kind of product that they install.
Great. Okay, well, thank you very much, Russell. So on that, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion that the council approve and authorize the mayor to sign a contract in the amount not to exceed $220,441.10, which includes a $20,040.10 contingency for the construction of the shade structures at Two Rivers Park and Dolores State Park.
Have a second?
A second.
Okay, you have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, this motion passes.
Thank you.
Forgot to make one second.
Moving on to item 8H. Introduction of First Reading of Proposed Amendments to Chapter 7.12, Vendors, Sidewalk Vendors, and Solicitors to Allow the Impoundment of Equipment, Goods, Food, and Merchandise of a Street Vendor Operating in Violation of Chapter 7.12, and Adoption of Exemption from SEQA. I'll turn it over to our city planner.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, if you recall, the state of California approved Senate Bill 946, which became effective in January 2019, which limited all local governments throughout California's regulation for sidewalk vendors. And the city of Fillmore followed it up, and we created our own ordinance regulating sidewalk vendors. Pretty much sidewalk vendors are allowed. You just need a business license and a health permit. And there is some regulation in Fillmore that is not allowed near some of our parks and a couple of other areas. And the reason was because there are concession stands in the park for games and such like that. We're concerned about competing businesses. Then in 2002, the state of California further defined what a vendor is for compact mobile food operations, the push carts and so forth. So there's a little definition there. And in the laws, the fines are administrative. They're no more than that. So our street vendors are decriminalized. And so they're allowed throughout California. But we are finding some violations where they don't have a business license and they don't have a health permit. And the fine isn't strong enough to prevent them from operating. So tonight, we're asking to amend the, or create an ordinance that allows us to impound the equipment. The city would keep it for 30 days, and the vendor can get it back within those 30 days. If they don't want it after 30 days, we'll destroy it or remove it. And that's what the ordinance is for tonight. We recommend the introduction of that ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from council, comments?
I do have a question. Thank you, Kevin. And that is, and I'm sorry if I missed in the staff report, but the impounding of equipment, is that in the notice of violations or citations, would that be initial one? Or is it, you know, citation one, citation two, then impound, like?
No, we'd do the fine first.
Fine.
And I don't know if it's one, or two, or three. But if a vendor's troublesome and they keep coming back, I'm sure our code enforcement officer would impound it. But, I mean, it's not easy to impound, right? So we'd have to get public works involved, possibly police. So it's a difficult process to impound, and that's not our first or second step.
I'm wondering if upon a citation to a vendor for not having their business license or their health permit, will there be a verbal communication, just some kind of notice that, you know, because this is the teeth, right? Like you said, the other, the citations isn't working, and so. But I just wanted to make sure that vendor knows upon that citation, next time, you know, we will, you know, you can lose your equipment.
Yeah, you're exactly right. Our code enforcement officer is already doing this, and he's been doing it. So he has a verbal conversation first, and sometimes it's five, six, seven, eight times, explaining and explaining. There was, and we're talking about a different type of vendor, and it was totally illegal. It was an outdoor kitchen on city property at the entrance of the city. And on the east end of town, that took some serious code enforcement. And that's the type of stuff we're really talking about. The vendor, the normal street vendors, they really aren't too much of an issue. Unless they're serving food that's not, you know, healthy. Not in terms of nutritionists, but not prepared properly.
Right.
On the first citation, is it actually in writing that if they're cited again, or if it's a second or third time, whatever, that their equipment will be confiscated? Is it in writing on something?
No, the first time the code enforcement officer visits a vendor, it's just verbal. And everything's pretty relaxed, and they're pretty compliant after that, right? But if they come back three or four weeks later, or a month later, then it'll be a written citation, and it'll be written on the citation card.
And Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong, they also do have to have a health permit, right, from the county?
They need two things, a business license and a health permit, if they're serving food.
And the county also stresses what you just said about having the kitchen or the legal food that's not prepared, right?
Correct.
And they can also, if I think I'm right, they can also take away their equipment.
Not within the city limits, and that's why, that's what started this. Within the city limits, they ask that the city of Fillmore have an ordinance that gives us legal authority to impound and impound on city property, and we keep it for 30 days. Right? They're kind of driving this train a little bit. They can do that out in the county. And they, they did state, if we have a troubled vendor, like this outdoor kitchen, they're going to assist us in that process.
Thank you.
You bet.
Could you, I guess, maybe put in, quantify the amount of times where it's been so problematic that we may have wished to have gone through the impoundment up to this point?
One.
Just one?
There's just been one, yeah. We go to vendors all the time, and they're pretty cooperative, so, but we just had that one.
Okay.
After about three or four years.
Okay.
Good to know. Okay, anyone else? Okay, then I will entertain a motion.
I motion to pass ordinance number 24963, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Fillmore, California, amending Chapter 7.12, Vendors, Sidewalk Vendors, and Solicitors to Allow Impoundment of Equipment, Goods, Food, and Merchandise of a, of a street vendor operating in violation of Chapter 7.12 whose operations constitute an immediate threat, hazard, or danger for persons and property and adoption of exemption from SEQA.
A second.
You have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, this item passes. Okay, moving on to item 8I. This is a City Council affirmation of City of Fillmore Local Emergency Declaration resulting from severe winter storms in early February 2024.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, the recommendation is that City Council adopt Resolution 24-3986 to affirm the city manager's proclamation of a local emergency as a result of the damage incurred by the severe winter storms to the concrete bike path and the pole fencing on February 5, 2024. As you know, we had severe storms a couple of weeks ago, and the governor declared it, issued an emergency for several counties, which included Ventura County, in response to the severe weather. Unfortunately, on February 5, the city's bike path infrastructure sustained significant damage, primarily along the Sespe Creek area, under the bridge at Telegraph Road, and 200 feet north Ventura Road and State Route 126. The turbulent flows from the storm resulted in... The turbulent flows from the storm resulted in erosion underneath the concrete bike path, undermining approximately 120 feet in total. Additionally, the lodgepole fencing along those sections of the bike path has been washed out, totaling approximately 140 feet. Furthermore, along the bike path between A Street and B Street, 15 lodgepole fence posts were damaged and now need to be replaced. Now, this damage to city and public infrastructure presents an immediate peril to the health, safety, and welfare of the residents and businesses of the city of Fillmore and to city staff and operations. As a result, the bike path infrastructure damaged, the City of Fillmore City Manager, who also serves as the Emergency Services Director, declared a local emergency in Fillmore on February 8th, 2024. Again, we're asking City Council to adopt Resolution 243986 to affirm the declaration of a local emergency. Fiscal impact is approximately $290,000. Staff then meet with the local OES, Office of Birthday Services Local, and FEMA people today and walk the sites for them. So, we are in the process of starting reimbursement process, and we did it with the sewer line a few months ago. Again, this also meets one of City Council's goals for infrastructure, and if I will entertain any questions you might have.
Okay.
I was curious, for the repair process, I know, essentially, the rains weren't quite as bad as last year, but because they occurred in, like, freshly carved paths of the stream from last year, their impacts were greater. So, those, that portion where it's meandered a little bit further towards the banks, the reason why essentially the bridge is going through the issue it is now, are these repairs going to require, like, some sort of diversion of what's currently up against those banks? They probably dry out a little quicker, but I was just curious if you could maybe speak to that, or what that looks like.
Yeah, we'll need to do engineering studies out there. We will bring in Roxanne and her team to do the scope of the plan for us, go out there, make sure it's all done correctly to maintain, and if the water comes again, hopefully, we have it pushed off so it can absorb the water coming down that way. And then, the poles will be pretty easy to replace, just putting it back and replacing those. The bigger is going to be the infrastructure, the concrete bike path, to make sure we get that drawn up correctly and get that bid properly, to make sure the water does recede, so we can get in there and make the necessary repairs on the bike path out there.
Anyone else?
Just wanted to make a comment. I think I found out about this before even reading the staff report, when I sent my daughter and her cousin to go on the bike path, and then they came back and said, "We got stuck in the sand." No idea. All right, well, there we go. Okay.
Okay, so, just a quick question here for you, Dave. So, we're talking about lodgepole fencing in several different locations, or primarily near the same Sespe Creek area, but can you share with us why we're not addressing at this point in time on this agenda item, just so the community knows why we're not talking about Old Telegraph Road and the bridge itself?
Yeah, I was going to bring up my manager's report, but just, yeah, as many people know, Old Telegraph Road and C Street, the intersection there is closed right now. There was, the bridge is compromised on the west side of the bridge, and the bridge is under the jurisdiction of Ventura County. Ventura County is the one who is currently looking at the bridge to make sure the current status, is it safe to drive on or not? So, do have barricades up there for a reason. If you drive around that barricade, there is potential that you might fall in the river. There's a reason why they have the barricades up there. They need to make sure it's structurally sound. So, please, if you're out there and you're trying to take a shortcut, just keep it in the back of your mind. We don't want to see you on the news, that we have to pull you out of the river because the bridge gave in. We are in touch with both the, our both our fire chief and police chief are in touch with Ventura County for any updates that they can provide us. They're also in contact with Ventura County Transportation Commission. They had some reports done on the structure earlier in the year, when Sierra Railroad was out there doing repairs to the railroad bridge that had collapsed over a year ago. So, again, we'll post updates on our social media sites when we get any updates from the county. We'll also make presentations here at City Council to keep people updated as well. So, right now, that is, roads are closed. We're really encouraging everybody not to drive around the barricades, they're for a reason. I know it may take a little more time, but want everybody to be safe out there, and hopefully we'll get some answers from the county here in the next couple of weeks, if they bring in their experts to take a look at the damage that has been done by the water out there.
Okay, great. Thank you for that information. Okay, so, any other questions or comments? Can you move on to a motion?
Sure. I'll make that motion, that City Council adopt Resolution 24-3986 to affirm the city manager's proclamation of a local emergency as a result of the damage incurred by the severe winter storms to the concrete bike path and pole fencing on February 5th, 2024.
Motion. Did I hear a second?
I'm going to second, but I'll wait till you have a motion, I have a second. Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, this item passes. Okay, so, that was our last agenda item. Am I correct on that? So, that takes us to item number nine, committee, commission, and board reports. And this goes to council. Anyone reporting on anything?
At our next meeting, I'll have a report on a couple of commissions.
And then, I'm assuming, Dave, you probably have more for your city manager's report, since we moved your one item.
Nothing else, thank you.
Okay.
I have a question, just about what you already spoke about, but I've heard some concerns from the public about having to go all the way around towards Old Telegraph and 126. Just, traffic has increased over the years since it was widened from the two lanes now to four. If we could advocate to the county, once we learn of, like, a timeline, about the potential maybe to put in, like, a temporary light, or something that just controls traffic a little bit better coming out of there, because it's a renewed hazard that a lot of people who have been used to going over Old Telegraph Bridge for quite a while are having to deal with, especially at night. Just to, again, they're not residents, most of them coming in, but a lot of residents used to go out to that point, whether it's to go through that part of the community, but I think it would make sense to ask that question, once we know further about how long the bridge might be closed.
I also, just to add to that, I spoke with a few committee members as well, who had concerns about, especially when it was raining, making a left-hand turn, coming out of Old Telegraph Road, just to get into Fillmore. And one person suggested, even if it's not a temporary signal, but, you know, one of the signs that we are on, what are they called? Help me out here.
It's over the signboard?
Yeah. With the, you know, something to alert people of the, you know, traffic, it's going to be increased traffic, obviously, coming out there for all the homeowners that are up on that part of town. Anyway, just food for thought.
And to follow up on what you just said, I did send an email to Kathy Long, or Kelly Long. Yeah, so, I'm waiting to hear back.
You need to hear back from Kathy.
Oh, Kelly, yeah. I think Kelly, sorry.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, we are going to now.
Do the same thing.
Going to adjourn for closed session. We'll come back out and adjourn the meeting after we are through with closed session. Closed session, we have a conference with legal counsel on labor negotiations, and also a conference with anticipated litigation on three cases. So, we will adjourn for now, and we'll be back when we are through with closed session. Thank you.
Okay, the city council session is back in order. The city council met in closed session and was updated by staff. No reportable action. The meeting is adjourned to the next regularly scheduled meeting at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, February 27th at City Hall.